Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we come out of executive session.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And Carl, you will read it, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Certification, closed session pursuant to subsection 2.2-3712 D of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. Each member of the Board of Supervisors upon roll call certifies at the basis of their knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was a departure of the requirements shall state so prior to the vote indicating the substance of that departure in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe a departure has taken place? Being none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace.
Yes.
Luann Wallace.
Yes.
Carl Ray.
Yes.
David Eaton.
Yes.
Steve Breeding.
Yes.
Horace Christian.
Yes.
Rebecca Di.
Yes.
Ma'am, you have approval to turn to regular session.
Thank you. All right, at this time, if we'll please stand for invocation, remain standing for the pledge, please.
Thank you, dear Lord, for this day. Thank you for all of our family, our friends, the people of this community. Lead, guide, and direct us. Help us to do thy will, to know that we are making the decisions for the people that are in our county, that we represent them, and we represent you to do the right thing by these folks. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, at this time, I need a motion to accept the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the agenda as presented.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Carl, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The first item is to open the floor for public comments, public hearing on the Cleveland School property, transferring it to the Russell County IDA. So at this time, if anyone has a comment on this action. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on the transfer of the Cleveland property. Next on air, public hearings is the given school lease to Southwest Virginia Star Project, Star Ministries, correct terms. So if anyone has any comments on the public hearing on the given school lease, please step forward.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brown Sims, and I'm here on behalf of Street Kings Auto Club. In reference to the Southwest Virginia Star Project, we as an auto club support the Star Project and their mission. We actively fund, raise, to assist in the many charities that we provide. Many of our members have at one point needed assistance for themselves and their families. As Star Project has always been more willing to step forward with assistance, whether it be Christmas presents for our children, supplies, clothing, food, appliances, and furniture. The Star Project is always willing to help anyone with their needs. This organization not only helps people in our county, but also surrounding counties. It would be a disservice to our community for this organization to have to relocate or disappear altogether for lack of base of operations. Many families and individuals depend on Star Ministries with use of given school. Not only would they be able to continue their amazing charities, they would have the room to expand on many aspects and services that they provide. In closing, I implore this committee to please allow the Southwest Virginia Star Project to use the former Given's Elementary School at a minimum fee. Thank you for your time, and please remember, we do this for our children and those in need.
All right, any other folks? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on the Given's School Lease. Next is our public hearing concerning the VDOT Route 637 discontinued bridge. It's a prescriptive easement of right of way. Anyone want to make a comment on the public hearing on the discontinuation of the bridge? All right, seeing, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on the disclosing of the Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our July 12 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
David, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to post?
I abstain. I wasn't here last month.
All right, next on the agenda is approval of our expenditures, approval of paying all the bills. Do we have a motion for that?
Some movement, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Steve.
Second.
Second, Lou, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And Carl, you will abstain again.
Yes, abstain.
Thank you. Thank you. That's correct. All right, the next thing is our committee appointments for the board considerations. They were tabled at our last meeting. The first thing we have is our county advisory committee.
Madam Chair, that was, that was the one that we all agreed that we would make an appointment to. Each supervisor would have one appointment to a committee to look at the issues that are being handed down from the state, these unfunded mandates in relation to a lot of different things. So I don't know how we want to proceed with this. Each, just by supervisor?
Katie, do you think just each district make their nomination, who they're going to appoint?
Yes, you just, just start with whoever you want to. That was my understanding, the advisory committee, that each of you would select a member from your district to serve on that advisory committee.
This is an ad hoc committee that will discuss the things with the schools, the unfunded mandates with the school. Tim, we'll start with you.
I do not have anyone yet.
Okay, Lou?
I'd like to wait on that, if you don't mind.
Okay. Carl?
I'd like to point Jennifer Chumley.
All right. David?
I'd like to point Lynn Hayes.
Steve?
I'd like to point Nate Kazzer.
Horace?
I don't have anyone as of now.
Okay. And for myself, I don't have anyone. The one I asked has not called me back. So I have no one at this time.
Okay, the dilemma here is, we had asked the county attorney for advice on, I keep getting questions on how is this supposed to act, how is this committee supposed to react, and it is an ad hoc, so it has, it has volunteer time, it has no money behind it, and it has no teeth or anything else. It's just a recommendation or an opinion to the Board of Supervisors to tell the school board what to do, who is an elected body. So I'm just questioning that, and I need your help on this.
Yes, it's, and I think when you all formulated the advisory committee, I asked those questions. It doesn't, you know, nobody will be paid a fee for attendance at any meetings, so it'll be a volunteer, and they give advice to this board on issues related to, my understanding, you know, I think, I think it was in relation to a specific issue, but informing it, you know, issues affecting the community. They would just give advice. They would not have any authority. Obviously, they couldn't vote. They're, only the elected officials can vote on the Board of Supervisors and the school board. So as far as that, they don't have any authority. The way I saw it is, it was just, I guess, an organized way for the community to present issues of concern to this board.
Well, I guess my position is to make it more like a town hall event where me as an elected official goes to the people in my district and have the ability to meet them at a location, or, you know, in regards to a lot of issues that, that we face consistently and not have to wait till the board meeting monthly to be able to discuss some of these topics.
I think you could go and attend maybe some of their meetings, but again, this board would have to be aware of the limitations of FOIA, and not more than two of you could be present at a meeting, otherwise it would be an illegal meeting.
I, I think it was intended that this board would, that this committee, not this board, this committee would be open to the public. However, there's only seven members on this committee who would formulate the recommendations. They would take the comments from everybody, and certainly I'd, I'd want to attend some of them myself, but I understand that we can't have more than two supervisors in one area.
Yes, and, and again, when, when you formulated it, and maybe your vision will change as it progresses, but there was not really any, since it wasn't a really, it wasn't a formal board or authority, there was no need for bylaws, but I mean, you know, I don't know if that's something that will be created. I mean, for it to be open to the public and things like that, I mean, I don't, I don't, I guess, I guess the way I envisioned it, from what you all described, it would be kind of up to them, like they would be a group of individuals.
This is kind of a formal way for the community to become involved and funnel it into one group that can bring it back to the Board of Supervisors in a formal.
In an organized fashion, as opposed, as opposed to just each citizen bringing a concern.
I'm sure there are a lot of people, as you don't want to come up here and speak, you know, but they're, they're willing to voice their opinions to some of their neighbors and friends, and you know, if you've got, that committee is meeting, let's say they're meeting up in the Rosedale area, you know, that gives the people the opportunity from that area to come in and say, I've got a gripe about this, or that, or whatever, and the board, that committee can take it and polish it up and kind of weed out, maybe it's illegitimate, maybe some of it's not, but they can bring a report back to the board. It's, it's kind of like a filter, I guess, as much as anything, and they can, he can make recommendations to the board.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and any citizen could do that, but I mean, the way I see it, like you said, is just a more organized fashion as opposed to one citizen doing it.
Would not a citizen be able to do pretty well the same thing to their elected person? Yeah. If, if they've got a complaint, take it to the board member. When I was campaigning, I told them I'd take your concern, your need, and your gripe to the board. So if they would do that, and then each one of us members stand up in their behalf, could that not take the place of that, or am I overlooking something?
This, this is just a mechanism, get more people involved, you know. It's, it's an ordeal to try to run you or me down, you know, and, and make an appointment to see you, or whatever, you know. So this is just an opportunity, you know, for people, get more people involved in this whole process, you know.
Any other comments? Any other thoughts? All right, the next one we have is the planning commission.
Madam Chair, I think I included some stuff in, in our board packet. I, I think, you know, when we decided we were going to go have one appointment per board member, but we're not going to take anybody off the board, you know, who's on there. And we need some sort of mechanism as to how we're going to do this until we finally get down to that one point, that one appointment per board member, because, you know, it's probably going to take two or three years, at the very least, to, to get to that point. So I did a little analysis of it, and it's. Say, I'm just going to use the planning commission for an example, you know. When I look at the planning commission, District One has one member, District Two has no members, District Three has three members, District Four has no members, District Five has two members, and District Six has two members, and at large actually has no members. Although I think you're, you're probably, you're the at-large, yeah, that large member, yeah. So say, for example, I'm in District Five, I've got two members, and one of my appointments comes up. I can either reappoint him, appoint somebody else, or just pass by and say that my second member, you know, I'm going to save my appointment for that second member, in which case the next supervisor who doesn't have, which would be number two, five, two or five, would be ready to make an appointment there. I know it's kind of complicated, but there's no, there's no easy way to do this, other than just, you know, dive in and do it.
Dustin Keith, is he in yours too?
No, he's in yours.
No, he lives in town. He ran for town council. He lives in.
He's not his address.
Well, he lives in town.
He used to live in town. His address is Hilton Garden Road.
He ran for town council?
Yeah, but that was before he bought a house.
He's moved back out. That's his old address. That's back when he's back in high school as a young kid.
I don't know.
I'm going by what's on the Russell County Planning Commission list of the board members and their address.
He's on the board right now.
On the planning commission.
The planning commission.
Yeah. And like with the other one.
He's coming up for.
Uh huh.
October.
And like the other board member, you made that motion for the other board member that's on there. You nominated Andy Smith back.
I did?
Yep.
Well, Andy's not in my district. He's in your district. This is, this is where the complication.
That's right. That's where, that's where it gets real muddy, real quick.
Well, first of all, I guess we need to find out where Dustin lives. Do you know, Lonzo? Or can you find out? I've already asked you about two others.
Or Dustin. This is hard. He's on the spot. It's getting muddy real, real quick.
If anybody has any suggestions how to do this, open now or forever, keep your peace.
Okay. You opened the door. Now, I, you know, when we got here in 2016, that's one of the things that we agreed upon, and we said that equal representation was quite important. Because as we look through, I appreciate the town of Lebanon, but then, oh, they're all stacked up here on some of these committees real good, and District Two is out in the cold on some of them. Now, that's not a problem. So I don't, I don't, I don't want to be ugly about it, but representation is important for all of us. Now, so let's move along to how we're going to get this done, and I, I'm going to say straight up, I'm going to vote with you on this. But, I got a but in there, but I need the attorney to take care of a few little issues in, in what you wrote for us last time, and I'm not happy with some of the language in there, so I think we can work through that.
I think we do need to amend it, and that if you cannot find somebody in your district that you have the option to appoint from anywhere in the county, because, I mean, if we're going to have seven board members, we can't leave a board three members short.
I agree.
Or else they'll be.
I agree. So, so one of the things that I'm proposing in all of this is that we look at the committees that, that are already there, and we reach into those committees and ask those chair people if they would like to make a suggestion on how to make this role easier perhaps, because they have not been asked a thing. And I think it's unfortunate that we haven't done that. I, I, but getting this and trying to go through 200 and some pages, you don't really think about things until you, we all get here and we can actually discuss. So with that being said, that's one of the things that I would really like to see done, is to reach into these committees, because they all know how they interact with each other, and what they need, and how each one represents a precinct or a district. So that's one of the things that I want to ask for. The other thing is, I would kind of like the, the language changed a little bit in this other piece of, you know, if you don't find a qualified candidate, I, I think all people are qualified to serve. Even us up here are not required to have.
I guess if she had a qualified candidate who was willing to serve.
And I get that. So I just want everybody to know that everyone's qualified at, at some level or another to serve on these, in these, all these positions. So that language bothers me greatly, and there's a couple of more pieces, but I won't go into that. But I'm kind of there, so if, if our attorney would kind of help us out a little bit with laying some guidelines, I would be more than happy to listen to that and, and be amenable to that. I know, Steve and I are going to kill you, we know.
That, that's fine. I was just going to make the recommendation, because I know we did a motion to amend the bylaws at the last meeting, and then this would further amendment, amend it. I would just, I would just make the recommendation, which is just a recommendation, to let me look at it, to make sure it all works well together and that I don't see any issues, because when you amend things piecemeal, sometimes you don't, it, it doesn't read the way that you intend it to, and so I, I don't think that would be a bad idea, and if board members would send me suggestions on language they would like to see, like as criteria or whatever, in the motion that we passed last time, and this motion, I mean, I can try to craft something that addresses those concerns, but I'm happy to do that.
Well, anybody in District Four that would like to serve in any capacity, sign up. Yeah, contact the county and sign up if you have a desire or want to participate and see this, and see Russell County grow and do better, you know, or contact me directly, because we need participation. We need people to get involved, and we need people, you know, that are willing to, to serve. And so, I mean, anybody in, in my district, and I'm sure I'm speaking for everybody here, I noticed Lou was grabbing the hammer about the same time I done this, but.
You are. You're talking well for us. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just put in an application to the county and let us sort through these things. I mean, we would love to have, have more people get involved.
But now, I will say, I do think that we need to say this, clarification on this is, our little community centers that are already functioning in those, that's, that's not in this mix at all.
Anything less than seven should just be done by general election.
Okay, but I want to make sure.
And those community senators that are in your district, I think we've all agreed that you can make the appointments on that.
It's hands-off. We, those, those people in our communities are working in our community centers. Yeah, I got it. So I just want to make that perfectly clear also.
Do you want language like that in the bylaws that addresses those boards that say that that'll be done by?
I really think we should.
Nominated by the, by the board member whose district.
Well, if you look at the motion, it says anything less than the seven, I think, would be done by general election, nomination election.
Okay, do you, do you want to put in there to be specifically that the board member's district who it's in would be, be the person to nominate it, or anybody nominate it?
If it only affects your district, then it should be up to that supervisor.
I think it's more or less a gentleman's agreement, and gentlewoman's agreement, excuse me, that, you know, if it's in your district, you're going to get to make the appointments. I don't, I don't see it's necessary, but whatever you want it to.
Do you think we do?
I mean, no, all I can say from a legal standpoint is if there was ever a disagreement, there would be nothing right.
Well, you know, then you've got the at-large member, you know, who.
Exactly. Who, who would, who would, you know, who would he get to nominate? So I mean, it's just good, it's good to think those things through, so you can craft the, the bylaws that, that best serves what you're trying to achieve and.
Yeah, and, and I think this is a real healthy way to do this. I do. I, I do not have a disagreement at all. I just think that we need to discuss this out for the public's ears, and I think that we need to all be in kind of one accord here, and I think we are on some of these things, but I want to hear back from the planning commission, the IDA. I want to hear back from those people who are working diligently already in those committees, and they know how they work. I don't know how they work. I'm not serving on those committees. And so I really want to know that. Plus, one of the things that Mr. Eaton brought up last time was that we talked about quorums, and they were hard to get. Okay, well, I'm just going to say this, because this is my big opinion, and I'll share it. So if you're not able to attend regularly and give that board its support and be there to work in your community, then you need to be removed. And so I need to know that those boards have those in their bylaws, so that they don't have to say, well, that's what you did to us, because you reduced our number and we don't have anybody to vote.
Agreed.
I'm with you.
Okay.
My comment is with the Highway Safety Committee. That's a big board, but I will say, one of the gentlemen is a state trooper, one's the county sheriff, and one works for VDOT. I kind of think.
I think, I think those, I think those are appointed as advisors, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, they are. So those kind of need to stay, those folks, and then we have Tim and Carl on there that are representing us. I think we need to stay with those folks. And my Mr. Altizer is deceased, and I did not replace him last year. So he's been out.
I think, I think if supervisor wants to be their own representative, they can be their own representative.
So are we going to put that in there?
I think, but that's your appointment, as I see it, you know.
Well, clarity though.
But, but we have to remember, you can only have two.
I'm sorry.
First come, first served, you know. Yeah, Carl, how many times has Sheriff been to the meeting?
I haven't seen him.
Okay. How about the state trooper?
He never misses. He never, and he turns stuff in all over the county.
Yeah. So there's some that do and some that don't in advisory capacity, you know.
But are they considered a vote in that particular board?
There is no voting. It's just a committee.
It's consensus, consensus, okay.
They just all do recommendation, do that list, you know. Do you need a motion of any sort, Katie, or just, can you take our direction and just run with it?
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's not a motion on the floor to approve anything, so I think you're just directing me to, with these concerns, bring you some language back that, you know, incorporates what we did last time and this time. So I mean, I'm happy to do that and take any suggestions from board members, and then ultimately it'll be up for you all to decide what language you want to go with.
I guess then we need to table these again.
Well, do you need to table them, or do you want to go ahead and do the Dainte Community Center, because it's there? Do the library board, they're.
Well, the library board is, again, is an appointment. I mean, it's, I mean, it's going to be subject to whatever. Yeah. There, there is one that Dr. Wright had called me about, since he's in my district, and it's on the Southwest Community College Advisory Board. Lynn King is up for reappointment, but he is not eligible. He is going to go to the foundation board. He has talked to Catherine Easton, Dr. Easton's wife, and he has asked her if she would be willing to serve, and she has accepted, so I think.
Well, this is voted. I've been here, and we've always voted on this, and we do have. have an application for a Russell County citizen who has an application before us, who is a retired school teacher.
This, this was specifically asked for by Dr. Brown.
Well, he may not even know this lady and she's, she's an excellent person.
Okay. We'll just pass it through then. Just table it then. I'll call him and tell him that we couldn't do that.
Because this lady that did put in her application is an outstanding person. She's worked hard for the county and she deserves consideration also. And Dr. Wright might not even know her.
Okay. So do we get to fill some of their appointments today?
Well.
Only community centers?
What about the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development Commission?
And the Community Policy Management Team. That's pretty much by their bylaws because this person is the special ed director for the county schools. So what do we do with that one?
You can take up whatever appointments that you all want to take up. I don't know if you want to pick out the ones you think you should table and have a motion to table and then proceed on the rest of them.
So if we don't have an appointment already on those seats, we're allowed at this point that we can go ahead and do that?
From, from what I just heard, the ones you were talking about, my understanding was they weren't really controlled by this new policy, but they have their own provisions, sort of like we've talked about, like the IDA appointing somebody from the town. Is that what, is that correct about the boards you were talking about proceeding with? That they wouldn't really be affected by whatever changes you make to the bylaws? That was my understanding.
Uh huh. Yeah.
I mean, you don't, you can do all, you can do nothing. I mean, that's, that's up to, that's up to the board. But if you want to make it clear, if you want to, if you want to do the ones that are not affected by the policy, just make a motion to table the ones that are, that you are going to set off until the next meeting.
Okay. So you want a motion for us to pick the ones we want to table, like the Planning Commission, the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development, Library Board, Highway Safety? What else? What's anybody else's concern? Which?
So we will be prepared for those folks to get notification in a timely manner that they can have their meetings this month and they would be able to discuss what we're discussing now and how we would like to try to proceed with them being in the know, so to speak, and have an opinion on this. So for feedback. I see we have our IDA chair sitting here. I don't want to stick on anybody else, but you know, some of those members, Ernie, I apologize. Do you have an opinion?
What's, what do you think we should do? Table them all, Katie, or?
I want to make a motion. We just table them all until the next meeting. Let's get on with business here.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All right. All those in favor of tabling them again?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. For citizens' comment, and I have a sheet from Doro Martin. Doro?
Doro Martin.
Step forward, state your name and give your address, please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Doro Martin, D-O-R-O-M-A-R-T-A-N.
And your address?
173 North Georgia Avenue in Lebanon.
Thank you. Go ahead, dear.
I'm not asking for anything. Just, I just wanted to inform you all on the last weekend of September, which is September 25th and 26th, we will have our first annual Vet Fest at the Russell County Fair. What this is, is supposed to be a, a community gathering for everybody, young, old, whatever, to come together, connect with veterans. We're going to have, Saturday is going to be a more family oriented day. We're going to have a 5K run walk, a 12K ruck. We're going to have a cornhole tournament. We're going to have a tug of war competition, which Bill Watson has already challenged the Lebanon Police Department. So if you only know anybody who wants to challenge anybody else, please feel free. And there's going to be a bunch of children's games. All the children's games are free, face painting and egg races. Just old Americana stuff for fun and to fellowship and make connections. We will also have a resource center. We have a gentleman, a lady from the VA who will help. We will have somebody from the Department of Veterans Affairs. There's somebody from a fly fishing, Veterans Fly Fishing Company. Yes, thank you, sir. That is the, that's our flyer. The Appalachian Service Doc Group is going to be there. The Wounded Warriors that have opened a ranch in Bristol, they're going to be there. Just a lot of resources for our veterans and families to, 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 to take advantage of. Sunday, we're going to have a church service at 10:30. We will have a big car, truck, big rig, whatever vehicle we can bring in show that is going to be judged until about 1 o'clock. And then Appalachian Backroads Director Eric Hubbard is going to organize a ride for us. We're going to have a three hour ride and we'll be back at the Russell County Fairground about 4:30 and have a meal together and fellowship and hand out trophies. Just wanted to let you all know if you have any questions. I have cards here with my number on it with Alfred Wicks, who's the director of, the president of Fallen Warriors who are helping me. Our phone numbers are on there if you have any questions. And I would love for you all to come out and be a part and just get to know the veterans and, and see how we can help one another. All proceeds will go to Stop Soldier Suicide.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sounds like fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Doro.
All right. Next we have Mr. Sean Vance.
My name's Sean Vance. I live in 99 Willow Spring, District One. Tim Lovelace is the district. I have a couple of different things. Unfortunately, I have three minutes. First off, I do participate in the Star Ministry. I call their auctions for them twice a week. And if you all don't step up, I see y'all give money out all the time. Hey, we need a new sign. Here's $500. Hey, I need some dirt for my field. Here's $500. But she does a lot of good for the community. So maybe you should step up and wrangle that down a little bit. Of course, I don't know where you all with that. You might say, hey, it's free. And then you'll get a good vote out of my, for a change. Second thing is, is that with this tabling of this committee thing going on for the second month, as a citizen of Russell County, how do you think I'd look at you all? That you all can't make a simple pick of one person in 30 days? Some of you said, well, I ain't picked nobody. It's been 30 days. Now you're going to table the second time. 60 days. Next thing you, everybody be going, hey, Happy Merry Christmas. And what'd you all do? We'll table it with the ham. So as a citizen of the county, how much do I think you all know what you're doing if you all can't pick one person in 30 days? Thank you.
Next we have Mr. Brian Sims. Earlier, okay. Gotcha. And Michelle Vance.
Good evening. I'll be quick tonight, believe it or not. While you're doing your committee thinking and everything, I just wanted to put it out there. I know we had spoke about it once before when I tried to get on one of the committees about making the committees meet at a more reasonable time. Because for people like myself who work full time, we would love to be more involved in our communities. And we really don't have a chance because a lot of the boards meet during the day, during the week when we're working. So that's all I got tonight.
Anyone else? State your name and address and your concern.
Nate Kaiser, 918 Green Valley Road. It has actually been 46 days since you passed a resolution to create an advisory committee specifically to look into educational choices. Not, there's no, there's no mystery here. You can go back and look at the tape if you don't remember that well. If you don't remember that well, probably you shouldn't be on this board. It's absolutely ridiculous that there's four members on this board that haven't picked a person and then to, to make excuses, to make excuses, unacceptable, unacceptable. I've got 1,000 names on a petition that want options. There's kids that need options now, not at Christmas. Okay? We're dragging our feet here and it's ridiculous to act like, oh, well, we didn't have enough time. 46 days. All you got to pick is one person from your district, one. And I know there's been people that have contacted you all. It's absolutely inexcusable. And it tells parents that want school choice that you don't care about them. It's ridiculous. And imagine that, that it's the Fab Four, that's the ones that don't have picks. Imagine that. Ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous.
Anyone else? Any other citizens? All right. Seeing none, we'll close our citizens' comment period. Constitutional officers? Next we have our county attorney reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item that I have for the board's consideration tonight is the comprehensive agreement on the construction and remodel of the Russell County Courthouse. I have worked with our consultant with SCANSCA to review a contract that will be provided to the contractor to JA Street. He has made updates to the contract and I've made updates to the contract. I'm asking the board to approve this agreement tonight, subject to my final review authority to make minor changes and final approval. That way, if there are minor changes suggested by the contractor, I can work with Curtis and formulate language that we believe is in the county's best interest. Obviously, if there's a substantial change suggested, I would bring that back before you for your consideration.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We approve this contract, subject to the final revisions and any minor changes that are felt appropriate by the, our legal counsel.
Second.
Second. Lou, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Next.
The next item that I have is in relation to Project Jana and the RFQ that this board authorized. The committee that involves members with Tazewell and Buchanan County met. We did receive two proposals and we did rank those two, two firms pursuant to the Virginia Public Procurement Act and would like to proceed pursuant to procurement authority to negotiate with the firm that was ranked first. And so I'm asking the board to approve the RFQ committee's recommendation as to the proposals.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We accept the recommendation of RFQ committee and we authorize him to proceed with negotiations with the top ranked firm.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Tim? All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
The third item under my reports is the Cleveland School property. There was a public hearing, excuse me, there was a public hearing at the beginning of the meeting regarding the board transferring this property to the IDA. You know, there, there was no information, no, no individual spoke during the public hearing. I have been able to do the appropriate title work to, to get a D, but it would be up to the board's consideration if they want to approve this transfer.
Do we have a motion for this?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We transfer this property over to the IDA.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Carl, any discussion? Open the floor for discussion.
Well, what kind of end use are we going to have there? Is this a speculative move?
Yeah. All right. All right. The chairman of the IDA is here. If you'd like to get up and speak, let the public know what's there, what's the plan. Any financial records, any end documents, anything we need to know about?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. As we discussed last month, we do have a company who is interested in occupying this property and employing some people and actually doing some renovations to the property and improving it from the position it is in now. We have, that group is actually here tonight to be, be glad to answer any questions about their business and what they plan to do and their, their end use and what they, what they plan to succeed at is what we plan on. This property, as you well know, has sat empty for a number of years. And this is an opportunity for us to bring it back to life, do some renovations to it, make some improvements to it, and hopefully save the property from the condition that it's in now. So.
Who will pay for the renovations of this building?
The occupying company will pay for that.
So that will be in the papers?
It is in the agreement that they will sign, yes. And. You can't, no. We, we discussed that at our last meeting and Katie will be drafting that agreement. There's a lot of pieces within that and we'll be, we'll be glad to share that with you before it's executed, if you'd like to review it.
Now, this, this is the only, the property, it just sort of outlines the building. This doesn't affect the horse rink or the slide or anything else.
No, it truly is the, the plot, yeah, the plot that the building sits on. That's basically all it entails. That's correct. Any questions?
Katie, do you have any comments?
I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have.
I'd like to see that, all those documents before we, we've seen the documents on other stuff.
I mean, I think, again, before you dispose of property, you have to have a public hearing, but you don't have to take any action if there's additional information that you need. Or I guess an option would be to approve the conveyance to the IDA, subject to your, you know, final approval of the agreement between the IDA and the company. I mean, there's a couple of different options of how you can handle it.
There's a timeline in it that y'all, they're trying to get in and get operational.
They are trying to get operational, yes.
Well, you discussed with us prior and it was in executive closed session. We can't discuss in public. So we've never had any follow-up with that, if that's all transpired and finished. So, I mean, I have no problem with this, but I just think we need to see some more. We need to see some documents. We need to see the legal entity. We need to see the responsible parties. We need to see cost. We need to see projected figures, projected employees, that type of stuff.
That'll be the information the IDA will secure, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Most of which we have in hand. Yep.
That's why we have an IDA.
Exactly.
Correct.
Call for the vote.
Yep. Yep. Okay. All those, all those in favoring the Cleveland School over to the IDA?
Madam Chair, before, before we go, can we clarify that based on the documentations to come back to the board of supervisors, that we will, that will give comfort to some of the things that Mr. Christian had asked about and some of the things I had asked about? So we will know, we will know where we're going with this. And it won't just go out there and transfer to another company that may do something that the community, is not good for the community either. Gosh.
And Ms. Wallace, and if I can, kind of, it's, you know, it's a procedural thing. I mean, and, and the board can make any, you know, motion to modify or however they want to do it. But I mean, I guess from the IDA standpoint, being their legal counsel, they would probably not authorize me to draft. they would probably not authorize me to draft an agreement until they believe that there would be property for there, for there to be, for them to have to do that. But I don't, I don't know if you want to, again, make the conveyance subject to approval from this board of, of that agreement. That will, of course, delay because the board, the IDA will have to approve it and, and then you will have to approve it.
Oh dear. So you'll bring, the IDA will bring their documents back and present it in, to the public and to us, what they're going to do?
As a courtesy, yeah.
I think we owe it to the citizens. Alright, we have a motion on the floor. From Steve and a second from Carl, to give the Cleveland School to the IDA. Tim?
I don't have a problem with it, but I would like to see the, the information about it before we, we, I mean, I'm agreeable to, to do it with that condition, like Katie said.
Call for vote?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll have it. Katie, you bring it back to us. Ernie, you bring it back to us next month. Alright, the next thing on the agenda is the given school lease.
Wait, I want to clarify my motion. My motion was transfer that to the IDA. They're going to bring this stuff back to us as a courtesy to us, but they need to move with this thing.
We voted, we voted. We voted on your motion.
I just didn't want it misunderstood.
No. Next item is the given school lease.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a public hearing on this matter as well, and I know Ms. Thomas came to the board last month. And I have prepared a draft lease that will need a little bit, some additions, since I've been able to get some feedback from the board members. But basically, what this lease is, is basically the same agreement that the school board initially did with the Elk Garden Ministries when they came in. And the school board still owned the Elk Garden School. I guess fundamentally for the lease, the amount, and again, the amount of rent would be up to the board, but the agreement, when it related to Elk Garden, was the school board agreed to accept ten dollars a month in rent, but Elk Garden was responsible for all of the utilities, sewer, trash, trash removal, snow and ice removal, mowing. And so that would also be under this lease. So while the Board of Supervisors would not be making money off this project, it would be covering the cost of it. The tenant would cover the cost. And I've got other provisions, but if you do, if you do decide to go forward with this lease, if you, if you want to change anything that I've written, I'll put that in the motion, but also give me the flexibility to make minor changes, cause, and to work with the tenant to make minor changes so that we don't have, we can get something finalized before the next meeting.
I'll make that motion that we accept this and upon your final recommendations on that legal review. Is that okay to state it like that?
Yes, that, as presented, I know that I'm going to make some changes, specifically in the use of premises to clarify a couple of issues that were pointed out to me and also to allow me to make minor changes that might be suggested by that program, with the understanding that anything substantial I would bring back before this board.
I'll second that motion for discussion. And I'd like, I, I still think, you know, under the termination, we still need to have sixty rather than thirty-day termination period. And Amanda, this is exactly what we had talked about. It's you're responsible for utilities, water and electric, ten dollars a month. You'll have to maintain the property and keep the, keep it mowed. The, the top floor is shut off to reduce your electric costs. You can work with Lonzo to determine what areas, you know, outside, the playground and parking area and whatever. There's a bunch of property back behind it that you just don't even need to worry about. And...
You want to mow the fifty-five acres?
Yeah, we'd be glad to let you mow it, but you don't, yeah. But, and there was some mention about maybe keeping the trash, make sure the trash is, is taken off because there's bears up there. And I know you don't want any bears around. And other than that, I can't think of anything else, but we've authorized in Katie to go ahead and, and work with you on that.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The next thing we have is our General Registrar Official Election Advisory.
Sweet. We received a notification from the registrar due to all of these issues with COVID, requesting a waiver pursuant to twenty-four point two dash three oh seven, or, I'm sorry. Yes, a waiver to not have updated our precincts and, and to certify, I think, I think we need to certify that, that the precincts that we have are, are that were on the last is what we still currently have. But just to ask the board to approve a waiver for that, so you don't have to update that at this time. Yes, yes, we'll, we'll need to provide our minutes to the Department of Elections.
Okay.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Lou, do we have a second? David, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Lonzo, county administrator reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Upon the county administrator reports, first off is from the Virginia Department of Agriculture Animal Shelter Inspection Reports. Again, I would like to point out that the Russell County Animal Shelter, again, passed a yearly inspection with no deficiencies. We, they evaluated the facility, our adoption programs, our healthcare programs and adoptions. The Russell County Animal Shelter takes in about twelve hundred dogs annually without very little to none euthanizing, unless we have a medical problem, elderly hit by car or, you know, some drastic thing. But we, we have one of the most excellent adoption programs there is in southwest Virginia. If you look at the other ones that's going on in Tennessee right now, they're having problems. But as we move forward, you know, again, congratulations to the Russell County Animal Shelter personnel that run it. They have a lot of volunteers, they have a lot of time in this. We have put enormous amount of effort in this to get this up and it's a great accomplishment. Next on the county administrator reports is, of course, VDOT's quick summary of the county, within the county of Route six fifteen slide on Black Valley. The, the completion of action for this slide, anticipated repairs. The second one is the Pure Salmon Project, which we just discussed. We're getting ready to look at the internal road plans for this project. That is a multi-county project out on Route nineteen to, for industrial access funds. We're also looking at the Three Rivers Destination Center. The, this is down at the St. Pile. This is a pedestrian bridge into the Three Rivers Destination Center over into the Wise Expo Center. So it will lead, it will lead into the new park. It will go from the Destination Center to UVA Wise Center and then in, progress into the downtown or the state park. This is part of that piece of the tourism puzzle that, that VDOT is working with us on. Of course, all the maintenance activities, mow grass. I mean, anybody, I don't think anybody here complains about that. But of course, you've seen, we're slurring the roads, I mean, everywhere. Last year was the pandemic, so there was a lot of things that was overlooked and neglected during the time. So now they're trying to do catch-up and of course, they're slurring, you know, roads that you've never seen done before, and they still have a long way to go. So with that being said...
Lonzo, can I interrupt you on that?
Yes, sir.
I had to ask you a question one time about the slurry mix, and you said it was only used, because I'd had somebody tell me, you know, that area down in Hansonville where the pavement's all peeled up, they're not going to slurry that, are they?
Uh, no, sir, they're not.
They're going to re-
They're going to repave that.
They're going to repave all that. If you look at the-
That, that was one question, because a fellow had said he'd seen slurry work and he said, "It's not going to work in that area down there."
It's not big enough.
And that's why they stopped there.
Yeah, if you lose on both sides.
I know what caused it, is all those trucks stopping for the stop, you know, the red light down there.
Right, but that's why they stopped the slurry.
Yeah, they, they stopped right before and they're going to mill the rest.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yes, yes, they're going to mill all the way through the red lights and on both sides. That way they can pick it up because what had happened, the trucks had stopped during this and the salt had dripped off, it had blown this, it had blown the asphalt and it will, it'll build concrete, so they're going to repair that. But again, the, of course, they're going to work on the six oh one slide repairs on that and the drain pipes on Route sixty-seven near Pine Creek. Also, and next on the list is Tons of Beds Hollow. Of course, I talked with VDOT, actually this morning, until John left earlier, on Tons of Beds Hollow. I think they did a little work down there around the agreement with the private owner. And also, Thomas Warner Rule Rustic Project, the residency has not received the environmental clearance on this one yet, but intends to begin construction shortly after the clearance, so. Construction projects, the bridge replacement on Route six sixty-three, which is Rocky Fork Road, for which the board approved the closure on the route in June, I also spoke to them on this one, will be closed on or near September the first. There's a slight delay from the original anticipated closure, but the completion date will be early December and not anticipate the impact. The, the reason for the delay is the materials. Right now, if you're ordering construction materials, you will wait, especially with steel. So if y'all have any issues with VDOT, of course, as y'all have heard, we have a transportation committee. Y'all can report your concerns to them. Next on the county administrator reports is just for FYI. As everyone knows, we're, they're trying to get the economy back up. As for the board, this is through the American Rescue Plans. This is for economic development and different projects and different perspectives, which we can ask for additional funds, which the county is diligently doing. We're going after, you know, anything from broadband, you've heard of the seventeen million dollar broadband projects that we've been awarded. We're going after additional funds on those. We're also going after any water and sewer. Ms. Di has just got Belfast Phase Three, that was another six hundred and forty thousand dollars, so we're going after these funds too. So that's in the board's packet. Now, and on the request, as y'all have heard, the, from Katie, she was talking about the waivers for the, the, from the registrar's office. Now, we also have the, where the pandemic was here, the census got delayed and it will be delayed until September. In the meantime, we've got preliminary numbers and quadrants based off the census and Russell County and the, and the voting blocks. So at the, to get ahead of this, on this, as county administrator, a request from the board for a voter redistricting steering committee, you know, will be needed to regard the proposed voter districting planning. The committee will review census maps, census projections, census data to do the preliminary and final district voter projections. Currently, the county does not have the census, like I said before, but we expect to have it in September. So we're proactively planning to get ahead of this. So I need a motion, or I need appointment for the voter district steering committee. Madam Chair.
Okay, so you need me to appoint a couple of people to do that?
Two members, ma'am.
Okay, Tim and Lou, will y'all do that for us?
What does that exactly?
What you, yeah, tell them what it entails. You probably view the census to look at their, what the planning will be on, based on census.
Yes. In, in the proposed census, every county or district throughout Comer Plateau or the counties, our, our county is broke down to census blocks and they're in the quadrants and blocks. That will show you the change in households, change in census, the change in schoolchildren that has occurred over the ten-year period. Now, if there has been a major change up to the discretion of the board supervisors, that will determine y'all's districts, so, and voting districts. Right now, preliminary, and you know, we can tell by the numbers, this is, there's not been of a, much of a change in Russell County. There has been a few changes in a few area in the preliminary numbers, I can speak to the final numbers of the year, in small certain areas. As y'all have seen since the pandemic, I've got tags out of Florida, Kentucky, northern New York, they're moving in. So some of the ones that we have lost through nutrition and moved on, we also have gained. So we're also seeing in our housing sales. But this will be a look at the total voter district for each, each board member's district.
Yes, but the governor appoints those census folks that make the final, final.
That is correct.
This is just a, kind of an ad hoc type committee that's just looking at numbers, right?
It is, it is a, well, in, in some of the ones, if you have any boundary adjustments or if you have movements within the towns or certain things like this, this is a way for the board supervisors throughout all ninety-five counties, hundred and thirty-three municipalities, to say, okay, there is no changes or there is no major changes and this to give input back into the census.
Okay.
Can y'all serve on those?
I'll, I'll do that, Madam Chair, for you. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Next on the county administrator reports is, is the Virginia Brownfields Assistant Fund. This is, again, a grant for fifty thousand dollars. And this is part of the development or the environmental planning and phase two environmental site assessment of, again, the Three Rivers Destination Center. They were pre, we talked about previously with VDOT, with the bridge, pedestrian bridge going into St. Pile. This is the environmental impact on the Destination Center. So it is a grant for fifty thousand dollars and I need approval for appropriation on the grounds.
So we have a motion to accept this money and appropriate it.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion. We accept the money and appropriate it for the performance agreement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Carl, thank you. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrator reports is the Virginia Department of Fire and Programs Grant, which is ninety thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. This is a grant that's given to our fire departments for, to buy, to purchase equipment and aid to the localities. As we can see... As you can see, each one of the fire departments in their, and how they structured their, their fundings that were given to each, as you can see, they range from ten to twelve thousand dollars each. These are grants that are given to each fire department within the county that we work for to buy essential, you know, miscellaneous equipment or essential equipment so they can use it at will in, in their operations. So I need approval for the allocation of ninety thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars to the fire department grant.
So moved.
I'll second it.
David, that was you and Lou, alright.
Yeah, discussion?
Any discussion?
Yes, please. Okay. Basically, I'm voting for this, but are we going to, do you, do you take grant applications from, from the departments or is it an equal, is it an equal division? How, how do you do that? I just want to know.
From the Virginia Fire Soci, Department Associated, it is based off the population base. So where each, each service area they have, they're allotted each, each area. So that, that's how they work it. Now, they have to expend the money first. This is a reimbursement. This is not given upfront. So they have to account for every dollar that they spend to ensure that it is dedicated to their operations for that equipment, for that service area.
Fair enough. That's exactly what I want to know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Next on the county administrator reports in request is the Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator. Of course, last time y'all gave me approval to hire this position and the first candidate. Of course, last time y'all gave me approval to hire this position and the first candidate, we had to go back to negotiation to the second candidate, so again, this is an FYI, I don't need a motion on this one. So we will be proceeding to the second candidate for the selection as the Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator position. And of course, the last one on the County Administrator Reports in request is a proclamation for the Russell County Board Supervisors for the spinal muscular atrophy awareness day proclamation, which will be August the 22nd, 2021. I need an approval for a proclamation on this one. This affects approximately 1 in 11,000 babies regardless of race, ethnicity, or gender, and 150 Americans in genetic, genetic carrier of the disease. So I need to, approval, a motion for the approval of August the 22nd.
I'll make that motion, and I'd also like to thank Daniel Mead, he's here tonight, for presenting this to our board. You know, this is very critical that we have this proclamation in, in regards to this, and you know, any of these others that you all know of or, or can identify, please always contact us so we can do these type of things.
Second.
All right, we have a second, Steve. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, that concludes County Administrator Reports in Request. Thank you.
Okay, Tim, any matters?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Lou?
No, I don't, thank you.
Carl?
No, ma'am.
David?
Yes, just a couple, please, Madam Chair. On Saturday, one, I'd like to thank Greg and Melissa Kaiser and all the volunteers that participated in the Southwest Virginia Big Rig Showdown. It turned out to be a huge event, which I was not able to attend because I can't, I became a grandpa again, so I'm, I'm real excited about that, and I told Melissa and Greg, I would like to be in here to support that, because what they want to do every year is to give back in the local community and, in some of the areas of, of the county. Part of the, the funding they raised to go to their church ministry that builds handicap ramps, and they've done an outstanding job. I can't remember the last numbers, Steve might know, but it was untelling the handicap ramps that they've built in the county for people in need. And then, you know, part of this funding will go to a project in Honeaker, where we're looking to build a park, a splash pad, and some other things, so. And they got this on their mind and heart to do this, and it turned out to be an unbelievable event. And what we're hoping is that they will continue to do this each year, and I really urge the board to support them in this endeavor.
Well, I will speak to that, I'll jump ahead here, just speaking of that, David. I did come, and it was absolutely wonderful. It was a fabulous, the parking lot was crowded, everyone seemed to be having a good time, lots of family activities, and it was, it was wonderful for the town, Levnan and the county. It was good.
I've got one more thing, and I know this is in your district, actually, Madam Chair, but you've done a, a good job getting water and, and to a lot of the citizens up there in your community, and I know we've got one area there that I don't know who's actually, it could be in yours or it could be in Steve's district, but Aaron Ball and Neoma up there in the, out Corn Valley area is having a terrible.
It's in mine, and it's in a terrible district. I've already had Abingdon come out, I've had PSA come out, and there's over two miles of no houses and cost prohibitive. They've, I mean, I've had Harvey out, and it is, that, those folks deserve good water, and they deserve good internet up there. But PSA has told me, Harvey has told me, and DHCD has told me, cost prohibitive.
Well, one of the ideals that I'd came up with, and I'd run it by Steve, since he's one of the members of the Cumberland Plateau Commission, and I had talked to some of the funding agencies in Richmond about all this broadband money coming down to supposed to serve unserved, underserved areas. And, you know, we could actually put a big niche in this to be able to provide public water and internet at the same time in the same ditch. And instead of double dipping and going after one fund to do one project, why don't we do one project and be able to get broadband internet and actually good clean water to these people? Now, there's many residents up there, one guy especially, that his water is contaminated. He does not, he cannot drink it. He's even fearful of even taking a bath with it, and I've talked to him numerous times, and, you know, he just wants us as a board to try to reach out, so if the Cumberland Plateau has any broadband money, that's an unserved area that don't have anything.
Well, I, I think there's an application in right now, is, or in that Corn Valley area.
There is an application, waiting on Richmond.
And to address what David had talked about, we, we did this back in, it was in a section line that was going from, I was project manager on that, going from Duffield in Scott County up to Lee County, and actually installed some conduit in a water line, and we had to do openings like every couple hundred feet so they could actually blow the fiber into the line, but it's something that can be done. It's a little more costly to dig the ditch, but not near as costly as to dig two ditches separately. So I, I think there is some room to work on that, maybe to do a pilot project, it might be something that we might want to apply for under some of this money that's coming down here as an innovative project. Maybe it'll, you know, we can work our way into doing something like that. But yeah, it's, but honestly, you know, sometimes, sometimes you just have to bite the bullet and do it, you know, in order to get water to those people up there.
It is, it's beautiful, and those folks have lived there for years and years and years, it's families, and you can go all the, all the way to the head of the loop and come out, and they don't have water. It is not good.
I talked to Aaron Ball several months ago. I said, it's been probably a year. And tried to do what I could, but hung up against the same thing, that we're still running up again.
Haven't given up on it yet, there's, there's, there's still maybe a way that you can get it done, but it would make it a lot more feasible if we could do the internet in conjunction with, you know, I guess it's cheaper to hang, David, I guess it's cheaper to hang internet on the poles than it would be to.
Not really, no. Pole, pole rental expense is a continual expense. Once it's in the ground, once it's in the ground, you don't have all that pole rental expense and all that, and I know Tim and his district's got areas that need water. All you got to do is put a, just a rope in a piece of conduit and then have them come back. It would be a great partnership with the public service authority. That would be actually something that they might be able to partner with Cumberland Plateau and make additional funding to help build water projects and not have to be dependent on funding.
Debbie Milton is absolutely fabulous on getting money for the county. She knows what, how to go about it, and she will work diligently for people to do that.
Ready for me?
Yes, sir. It's your turn.
Okay, I've just got a couple of things. First, I guess, is that to put the county on notice, Cumberland Plateau, you know, we've, we received a substantial VODI grant, you know, to do internet service, and I've actually, we actually got some, some start-stop times at our last board meeting, which was shared in regular session. We started out in executive session, but it went to regular session when the dates were issued. So I gave those to Lonzo, if you want the dates, the start-stop dates for the several project, I think there's like five projects in 2021, you can check with him and he can get those, but there's, there's five major projects that'll be finished by the end of 2021. I think the last one, maybe it was Swords Creek Project, finished up in January of '22, and then there'll be another series of projects in '22. But, and we don't know the exact start and termination points of those, which is something I think we really need to have in order to plan out some of these isolated areas where, where we can go for money, additional money, some of the areas that we know the point's not going to serve, we need to go ahead and try to get those areas while all this money is available. But I think Cumberland Plateau is looking at submitting another application to the VODI to do, they've been urged to do that, to go towards what they call a universal coverage, and that their definition of universal coverage is that 90% of the population has access to internet. And they've been pretty successful, so it'll be a joint venture between Point Broadband and, and Cumberland Plateau Company, I guess. And what we're trying to do, they, they're going to ask each of the, each of the four counties to use $100,000 of their COVID money as match money for this. So I just wanted to put the board on notice that that's a request. In fact, I've got a copy of the letter, and I don't know if Lonzo's got it yet, but he will get it right soon, but, and I think it'd be money well spent. Cumberland Plateau will probably put up half a million dollars or more, I would say, from their funds, and then the balance would be another $400,000 from, so it'd be close to $900,000, and you're probably looking at a $15,000, $20 million project altogether, which is not much match money. Another thing, I've had so many calls about the school choice, people wanting, you know, is there any way that the county can do anything? And, you know, I look at it, and I, I think, yeah, there, there ought to be something we can do with respect to this. But one thing we need to know is we need to have an idea of what kind of homeschool, Christian school, or whatever, what kind of count we're talking about. And I think it would behoove us to have some sort of public hearing, maybe at our next board meeting, just to determine the interest in a school choice program of some sort, or an alternative education program of some sort. And so I think I want to make a motion that we hold a public hearing at our next board meeting, and at 6:00 too, and advertise it as we just solicit input on an alternative education program for the county, you know, to determine who's interested, if there's a great interest or if there's not a great interest. I heard Nate say that he had a petition out there that had a lot of people, were looking for that alternative.
It's not to take away from public.
No, it's not to take away from public schools. We, we are required by the state to fund our public education program, and we do that, plus a little bit. So, you know, we're not talking about taking anything away from schools, we just need, but we can't, you can't address the problem until you know what the, the depth of the problem is, so I want to make that motion.
I'll second it.
Now discussion.
All right, any discussion?
Yes. And during this, we're going to have to try to come up some way to finance this alternative choice of education.
Well, I, I think first of all, we need to see what kind of interest there is, you know, are we looking at, I, I looked at the statistics last year, and I had, I think there was, I can't remember what it was, it was about 180 altogether with religious exemption and homeschool. It was like 178, 180 or something like that.
I had that down too, and I don't remember, just somewhere along.
But at any rate, I don't know if, if it's going to increase, you know, I'm getting calls from people saying, I'm not putting my child in school.
I'm predicting it's going to greatly increase if they do what they said they're doing.
Before we can do anything, we need to know what kind of volume we're talking about. So that's basically what it is, to, to gauge the interest and to try to get a handle on, you know, what kind of program, and then, you're correct, we would have to develop some program, which would have to be approved by the entire board, you know.
All right, any further discussion?
So let me ask you this, so we're going into the educational part of it, you're not going to ask the school board to look at this?
School board has nothing to do with this. This is to develop, to determine if there is an interest in an alternative education. There may be no interest, I don't know. You know, I hear that there's a lot, but there's been like 180 of them, you know, last year, I don't know, are we talking about 200, 300, 400? I don't know, you know, so, but I think if the citizens of the county want it, we're obligated to at least look at it, or at least hear what they've got to say.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but I'm, I'm just asking, are we, are we overstepping over here to the educational side that has already got an elected board?
I don't think, I don't see it that way, no. What I think, what I think we're doing is responding to a request from the citizenry.
So are, with this, you're wanting to develop a plan on?
I want to have a public hearing to determine the interest in an alternative education program, not to develop one, let's just see who's interested in it, and if there's, the petitions are out there and if the people want to come and speak, then we'll hear them, and if there's enough interest, then the board can make a decision on whether or not they want to pursue that. See what I'm saying? I'm not talking about developing anything, but if, you know, you say you've got three or 400 people out there that say, we want an alternative education program, you know, I think that's, that'll be a decision the board will have to make.
Okay, no problem. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of having a public hearing?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Ours, do you have any, oh, I'm sorry, Steve, do you have any? Ours, any matters for you?
Well, I have been confronted about people that, we've had about 40 people died from COVID, and, uh, uh, few homes are giving the people the information, but they don't know how to process the application to get this $9,000, up to $9,000 that they can receive, so we need to get someone that can process those applications for people. Now, Jess Paris tells me he done three and got them approved, but he's a, there's a cutoff process that he's not doing it.
Well, I, I wonder, um, did the, how does that work? Does the funeral home give the person, the private citizen, that application?
Uh, to my understanding, they give them the information, and they've got to take that information and has someone to, to process, uh, the grant money, and this can be up to $9,000 if I understand correctly. If you've got insurance that covers $5,000 of your expense, there's seven, they will reimburse you for two, and right on, whichever way you know, your insurance, if you've got a $2,000 insurance, then they will, and it's $7,000, then they will reimburse you for five. Do you understand any way like that, Lonzo?
That's probably between the funeral home and that, that citizen, right? Their, the hip.
Well, if, if the funeral home doesn't know how to process it, and the citizen does know how to process it, then they're being deprived of getting a reimbursement on their funeral expense.
I've learned something new.
I think that's something that we need to, you know, get into and, and help these, well, if they, if they were 40 and three was processed, there's 37, that is not getting what they may be due.
I didn't know that. All right, the next, the only thing I really have to say, comment, is our next meeting will have to be on Tuesday. Next, our next board meeting is Monday, but that's Labor Day, so we will have our meeting on Tuesday, the 8th, here. All right, any other comments? Anybody else have anything to say?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, David. Do we have a second?
Second.
Carl, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.